Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the upside. I'm Jonathan Olesky with J Moore and our show is about to begin today. I'm very excited to introduce our two wonderful hosts, Beth Goldsmith, Chair of the Associated Jewish Federation of Baltimore, and Dr. Scott Rifkin, publisher of J Moore. Beth and Scott, take it away.
Thanks, Jonathan, and welcome to our virtual show, brought to you by the Associated Jewish Federation of Baltimore and J Moore Magazine to keep the Baltimore Jewish community informed during this time of uncertainty. Today, we'll be talking with Baltimore City Council President and Democratic nominee for Baltimore City Mayor, Brandon Scott. As cities across the country continue to struggle with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, they are working hard to find solutions that protect the physical and economic health of their citizens. And coupled with that are their responses to the ongoing protests against police brutality and racial inequality taking hold on their streets in the aftermath of the police-involved killings of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. Amid these challenging times, we look for answers for what we can do to bounce back stronger than ever. Today's guest has the pulse on Baltimore. Scott, please introduce our guest.
Sure. Hi, Brandon. Thank you for being here today. Truly appreciate it. This broadcast will get about 3,000 views between Facebook and YouTube and everywhere else. We've really been thrilled with the response to these weekly shows we've been doing. I gotta tell you a story. Many years ago, it's probably been eight or 10 years ago now, this young, smart lawyer showed up at my house to do something. He had just moved to Baltimore. He needed a job. He was doing some sort of, you know, contract work. Shows up at my house. I have a great conversation with him. And I pointed him in the direction of a political campaign. And who knew he'd end up as your chief of staff all these years later? Mike Huber, who works with you, who has been telling me what a wonderful, committed, smart guy you are for a number of years now. So thank you for keeping Mike off the streets and employed. And mostly just, I'm thrilled that Mike introduced us. It's really great. So let's start with the basics. Tell us a little bit about your background before you got into politics. Tell us the Brandon Scott story.
Oh, wow. My story is a true Baltimore story. I'm a first-generation Baltimorean. My parents are from the South. My mom's family moved here from rural Virginia, Amelia County, Virginia, outside of Richmond, when my mom was an infant. My dad followed my uncles and my older cousins here from rural North Carolina, where my grandparents ran a farm, which later on I'll tell you, which is why I don't eat pork. But that's the story. So I actually had my campaign announcement right at the spot where my parents met, when my dad was visiting in the summertime, visiting my uncle. I grew up in Park Heights. I lived at 2551 West Coast Spring Lane, right at Coast Spring in Pimlico as a young man growing up. And that's what really pushed me into service. Because when you grow up in a neighborhood that the world descends on for correctness, and then the other days of the year, you struggle to be recognized as human by your own city government, a change issue. When you see your first shooting before your 10th birthday, a change issue. When you live in a neighborhood that has vacancy, you know, schools are no heating air. It forces you to make a decision on whether you're going to accept that that's the way life has to be for people in your neighborhood and people like you across the city, or you can do something to change it. I was blessed. I went to a school that, Dr. King Elementary School, was blessed to get into Roland Park for middle. Went to Mervo, where I excelled both in track and in academics. Went to St. Mary's College of Maryland. Graduated with a degree in political science. Came home, worked at Big Brothers and Big Sisters, running mentoring programs. Came to City Hall, actually, when I was 23 years old, as a staffer in the council president's office and then mayor's office, decided to work at Wrecking Parks before running for election the first time in 2011. And the rest is history. Ran for reelection in 2016 and then ran for mayor this time. And really, for me, it's about making the city that I love, the city that created the opportunities that my family moved from rural poverty to be a working-class family. That kind of thing. I want to see that happen for everyone. I don't want any young people growing up and seeing the things that I had to see. I believe that Baltimore is truly the greatest city in America, but we have not recognized our promise because we've been leaving too many people and too many neighborhoods behind.
So let me start with a couple basics and then Beth, jump in anytime you want. Don't hesitate. You mentioned Baltimore has lots of problems. I'm assuming, and I'm not campaigning or anything, but I'm assuming you're the next mayor in Baltimore because Republicans generally don't have a whole lot of registered voters. And so I think we can make that assumption, although I know you want everybody to show up and vote on Election Day. But where do you start? Baltimore has lots of issues. COVID has made it harder. We need to spend a little time talking about the Black Lives Matter movement and racial injustice, and we will do that on this show. But where does Brandon Scott start on day one? What's he do first?
Well, day one, listen, this is what we have to do. First and foremost, we're going to build a better structure of city government. You have a city government structure that has not changed since 1974, which was 10 years before I was born. So no wonder it hasn't been successful. In order for us to tackle the tough issues that the cities faces, you have to have a better structure. So we're going to professionalize, modernize city government by having an official city administrator, someone who's an actual professional, like they have in Baltimore County, Howard County, and around Montgomery, Prince George's, DC, and Philadelphia, to run the day-to-day operations of city government. We're going to build that structure out. But we're also going to, day one, be very intentional and very focused on having a complete comprehensive strategy for dealing with violence in Baltimore. That is not just the police department, but every single agency. But starting with the police department and making sure that they are focused on the people who are committing the violence in Baltimore City, on the flow of illegal guns into our city. That's where we're going to start. We're going to start with the thing that is causing people to lose their lives. We're going to start with that. We're going to start with overdoses. We have to keep people alive and safe in the city first and build out a better structure for us to implement all the deep changes that need to happen.
Have we, talking about violence and crime, and it's all interrelated, have we criminalized a whole generation of young black men with the policing strategies that we see in our big cities? And what do we do about that?
Well, we did, right? And I have this discussion with folks all the time. It's actually nothing but pure D luck that I haven't ever been, quote-unquote, arrested. We know what was happening in my neighborhood when I was a child, right? We know when I was a teenager, when we were in zero tolerance. It wasn't, people always talk about driving while black or walking while black. And during zero tolerance, it was literally breathing while black. If you were outside breathing, and you're black, you might end up in the back of a police car with a paddy wagon, right? So we do know that. We know that so many people were arrested, you know, following the crime bills that they did at the time, at the national level, that came down to the city level. People who were just in possession of small amounts of drugs or who, you know, were loitering and all these other things that we saw these folks be arrested for, that, by the way, had no impact on reducing violence in Baltimore, really, when you think about the grand scheme of things. And what we have to now do is, one, when you know better, you do better. You go back, you undo those policies. You change the way that you deal with substance abuse. Never should we have been treating people with drug addiction as inherently criminal. That is not the way. The rest of the world shows us how to do it. You do it from a comprehensive way, a harm-reduction appropriate, a public health standpoint. You do that. And also, you have to now work twice as hard to go and invest in those people and the neighborhoods that we disinvested in, in the sense of education, capital improvement, recreation, health, but over-invested in when you talk about policing and actually investing those neighborhoods and those places to help build better people and better families, while we're changing the policies that need to be changed to make sure that we never have it to happen again.
So many years-
I'm going to jump in, Scott. I want to talk a little bit about the pandemic itself and not only how it's impacted Baltimore, but how it is continuing to impact that which you are seeking to do and what those roadblocks may be.
Well, listen, we know that no way of life has not been impacted by COVID-19. And to Scott's point, COVID-19 has helped further show the deep inequity of divide in the city of Baltimore. We know that a few years ago, Baltimore's Equity Assessment, a law that now is going to force the city to operate through a lens of equity, and I look forward to implementing that as mayor. But we know that when you talk about COVID and you talk about the fact that our young people, right, are going to be learning at home in a city where so many young people don't have access to the internet, and we have to figure out ways to bridge this divide and what that's going to mean, not just in the short term, but long term, when you have parents who are losing jobs because we know that the healthcare industry, the tourism industry, all of these things that Baltimore depends on has been extremely hurt by COVID-19. When you talk about the finances of the city itself, when we've had to, you had to pass a budget this year that we've had to do, had some reductions, COVID is wreaking havoc on everything that everyone does, including government. And until we actually get some folks and get DC in a point where there is not fighting back and forth while all the country is suffering, we really need them to step up to the plate in a big way to directly support cities and help cities be able to close their budget deficits so that we can have the services and the impact that we need because city governments, local governments are where the rubber meets the road. And we need their help to step up because we still don't know what the other side of COVID looks like or even where the tunnel is, right? Because we also, and let me get this out the way, we also have folks who are being unresponsible and not taking the, heeding the advice of public health professionals. And for all of those who are saying, we need to open, 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 open. Well, as long as people are not wearing masks, as long as people are not being responsible and physically distancing, when you do that, you're endangering your life, you're endangering the lives of people you interact with, the people that you love, and you're also hindering any chance of us getting back to normal soon.
So let me jump back, Beth. I apologize, but I really want to jump back a little bit to the criminalization issue just for a minute. Many years ago, and it makes me feel very old that you were born the year I graduated medical school. I'm feeling very old at the moment. But I've worked in the emergency rooms in Baltimore City at various times. I don't believe for one minute that our drug policies can ever work. I think we're kidding ourselves. And we had a mayor many years ago, Kurt Schmoe, who very publicly said, let's decriminalize drugs. Not necessarily selling drugs, but decriminalize drugs and start treating them as a public health issue. Where are you on that whole issue? I mean, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, I would say that Mayor Schmoe was a genius before his time, right? When he said that he was ridiculed, well, some odd years later, he looks like a genius because they continued to criminalize drugs. They continued to criminalize drug use. And what happened? What he said actually happened. You actually had families broken down, as you said, Scott. We had neighborhoods that have just been seen devastated, whole generations of people devastated, right? It shouldn't be, always talk about this. When I was at Dr. King Elementary, when we were playing basketball, right? The starting five, only two of us are, quote-unquote, successful in life. Two of them are dead, and one person is actually severely addicted to drugs. The only difference between my one friend and myself and the others is that the opportunities that we were afforded, going to a different school for middle school, not living in that kind of environment. But we have to, have to understand that substance abuse and drugs is a public health issue and should be handled that way. I've actually been pushing now as council president and will continue to push something. When you think about, for example, Scott, like I said, we lose more people, more people to overdose in Baltimore than we do to gun violence. No one ever talks about that fact, right? Because people, one, and this is something that I had to grow in personally, myself, because when you grow up at the corner of Coast Spring and Park Heights, you're culturally taught to look at people because of the way that folks thought at the time, to your point, right? Just say no to drugs. All of these things that were pushed down on us, we were taught to look at people with substance abuse issues as even less than human. I had to grow and mature in my own right to understand that that was wrong and that wasn't the right approach. And I had the opportunity to go to Brussels, to go to Barcelona and see things like safe injection, overdose prevention sites where neighborhoods that were just like mine, where I grew up, they didn't have the violence and they didn't have people overdosing because they were dealing with it from a public health standpoint. And those are the kind of things that we have to push. We have to begin the decriminalization. I think that when you think about, thinking in Baltimore, right? Think about the opportunity that we could have if the state of Maryland, like basic stuff, legalized marijuana. We know that we need to fund our schools. We have medical marijuana in the state of Maryland. Why aren't we just taking it to the full way? We have to totally reimagine how we deal with drugs and substance abuse, not just here locally, but in our country, because it has failed. They'll always say the war on drugs was the first failed American war since Vietnam. Why are they still trying to fight it? It will not work.
Yeah, I used to be on the board of Man Alive, which is one of the big, you know, Man Alive, a methadone center essentially. And you'd be surprised how many of the drug addicts, I don't want to say drug addicts, so of the folks who are addicted to heroin, who are treating it with methadone successfully, are wearing suits and ties and going to the office buildings in Baltimore City to go to work every day. So it's, when you treat it that way and not in a criminal way, you avoid the crime that comes out of the drug economy.
Scott, I just want to also say that, and this is my complete look on public safety. Day one, we're going to be focused on a holistic, comprehensive point of view. It won't just be police. It'll be the Health Department. It'll be Wrecking Parks. It'll be education. Because every single entity has a role in that. And we've been trying to cure a disease of violence in Baltimore just through policing, and that's never, never was going to happen and never is going to happen.
Brandon, let me jump in also with clearly the drug issue we all are well aware of, and we are well aware of it as a driver for the crime. What other major issues would you see as top three, let's say, on your agenda?
Well, listen, the Baltimore's greatest asset is our future, is our young people. And we have not been providing a system of education and otherwise for them to succeed and thrive in the future. If we want Baltimore to ever truly reach its full potential, we have to, as I often say, start investing in the future and the possibilities of our young people and not just simply investing in their barriers. So that means reimagining how we operate. That means having us invest more in our city school, reimagining the way that we educate them, especially our CTE education. Why aren't we partnering with our wonderful business community and matching our CTE jobs that are in our schools and CTE training program for the things that are going to be here? We know this cybersecurity is a great thing. Why aren't we doing that? We know that we're always going to have healthcare and tourism. We have to expand upon that. We know that we're always going to have government work here in the city. That's the kind of thing that we have to do in making that investment into young people. Also, doing things like family strengthening and training programs. I happen to sit on the board of the Center for Urban Families, where we work with not just young people, but fathers who are trying to return home from prison and be a part of their family's life and the children's life. That's the kind of tough work that we're going to have to do in order to make the city a better place. Do the basics also, right? The city government has to do the basic services for its residents correctly, efficiently, effectively, and not have us missing people's trash, people not getting water bills, getting water bills that are too high, you know, getting inconsistent. And that's very important for us and very important for me, too. And doing all of that to help the city grow in an equitable way is the way that we're going to prioritize.
Scott and Beth, I have an audience question for Council President Scott. So Council President Scott, we're taking questions live here on Zoom and from the Associated and J Moore's Facebook page.
Oh, great.
So, and I was just told, I'll tell the audience, Council President Scott, that your office just texted me and said, "We have you till 12:45." So thank you for being here for a little longer. Wanted to let everybody know that. Okay, so here's from John in Hamden. Said, "What would Mr. Scott do differently than the current mayor with the COVID-19 situation? What kind of preparations would be made for future health emergencies?"
Yeah, one, to your last point, I think, knowing what happened with COVID, one of the investments and things that we're going to have to do is once this subsides to some point, we can actually do a deep dive and analysis of what happened, how it happened, what we were, how we were prepared and how we can be better prepared in the future. That's basic, you know, emergency management, quote-unquote, disaster 101. Once you go through something like that, then no one has really went through in a very long time here with the data abilities that we have now. Then you assess so that you build structures to make sure that these things are better prepared for as possible in the future. To your other point, I'm just going to say, by and large, the mayor has handled this in a very, very appropriate way. There have been a few things that we disagreed with. Some of them, we had to legislate. For example, we legislated that people couldn't raise rent during COVID-19. I actually pushed for us to have, you know, closed bars and restaurants early, everything early, before even the governor or the mayor decided to. I actually also think that the city should be doing more as far as giving out masks, like ourselves, like going and purchasing and giving out masks. There are things that I would seemingly do, smallly do differently. But by and large, the city has been operating in an appropriate way because unlike other elected officials around the country here, following the advice of the public health professionals. That's the reality. The Health Commissioner should be guiding this ship, and she's guiding this ship. That's what we have to do. This is about public health and safety first, and everything else comes after that. That's what we have to do. Follow the people who know better. This is not an economic decision. This is not a political one. This is one that should be guided by public health.
So the businesses, I'm sorry, did you ever follow Jonathan?
No, no, no. No, I just wanted to thank Brandon Scott for those comments.
So business in Baltimore City has been tremendously injured by what's going on with COVID. The restaurants are in trouble. The little retail shops are in trouble. The big international businesses like, you know, what's her, here's my early Alzheimer's disease kicking in. Amazon, like Amazon, they benefited from all of this. But the retail shops and the restaurants, and even the business people in the office buildings have been tremendously affected by this. And we're seeing some of those offices talk about moving out to the suburbs. They feel it's more spread out and they're safer. And how do you, as mayor, jump in and start rebuilding the confidence in Baltimore business? Because you need that for the tax base and the job base.
Yeah, one, we have to do something that has been lacking, right? And actually have to show a deep vision for the city. Show people that we're going to operate in a way that we're going to actually communicate with folks and not be so abrasive consistently over and over again. But also, figure out how we can support. I actually said early on in COVID, and they end up doing a lot of this, that we should tap into city funds to help our local businesses, figuring out how we can help people as we dealt with the issues with the federal government, and we continue to do that. We're going, you have to, when you're a local leader, you have to be someone who's willing to charge. Because we, especially in an incident like this, we can't afford to wait, especially on waiting on DC. We know how things get there. We have to step up ourselves and do that. And also, show people the way. Show people, we know, and tell them, be honest with them. I'm never going to shy away from the city's issues. But show them that this is how I want to handle it. This is what you can hold me accountable for on crime. This is which, how you can hold me accountable on education. This is how you can hold me accountable on supporting business and business development. And just showing people that, listen, I can't make up from the mistakes of the past. I can only build a better structure and show folks that we can build a better Baltimore together. That's how we have to do it. We have to do that that way because I am not going to sell people a bill of goods. I am going to show people how I want to operate and invite them to be a part of a renaissance of Baltimore.
I'm going to jump in with that. That's exactly how we began this in my introduction, talking about how we can make, we can make Baltimore better. And with your ideas, with you at the helm, what can we do? I'll ask even more specifically, particularly about the Jewish community. We always align with racial inequality and with any kind of persecution because we ourselves feel that we have been victims as well. So let's talk a little bit about what we can do as partners and what perhaps other community organizations or volunteers from out, throughout the community can do to be a part of this.
Yeah, I think that, listen, when you're talking about a moment, right? Like the moment that we're in now, I always tell folks, I always say, I wonder what I would have been doing if I was living during a time of the civil rights movement or I was living during, you know, World War II and Hitler and Nazi Germany, or I was living during the abolitionist movement, during slavery. I just tell folks very simply, what you're doing right now is what you would have been doing then. And what, if folks want to get involved, because when you're at a point like this, this is a point of reflection for the whole country, right? The whole country. We have, we need folks to get involved. If you want to see racial injustice, racial inequity, all of these kinds of things, mistreatment by law enforcement, over and over again. If you want to see that stuff go away, then you have to be a part of that. Step up. There are many organizations in the city and in the state that are working towards. And for us, this is not new. We were kind of a hit of a curve on this, so to speak. Already, we've been working on reform. Already, we've been fighting for legislation, both here locally, but mostly in Annapolis, to change how these things happen. Already, there are organizations in the city committed to working around racial equity, supporting efforts like the one that we're going to be undertaking in the city, where we're going to be reimagining how the city spends its money through a lens of equity, right? Thinking about how we know that this city is the birthplace of housing realignment and segregation via legislation. And how we're going to, it's going to be a tough thing because it's going to be different when I'm saying, no, the city's going to start spending this capital dollars this way. That is going to be where people, we need people. Because right now, we're in the moment, and everyone is psyched up to be a part of it. But when the tough decisions are being made, when we need people who don't look like me, who, people who are affluent, people who normally don't get involved in social justice things, when people in Annapolis and in DC and in City Hall and in the community around the city see individuals like that, step up and say, I'm a part of this because this is the right thing to do. That we cannot have anybody being treated this way. That we cannot purposely discriminate against this group of people because of their looks, their religious belief, their sex, who they love at home. That's how we have to attack this issue. And that's what I want everyone to do. There's a seat on the bus of change for everyone. Find your seat, get comfortable, and stay in it.
That's-
I love that. I mean, that's a really good visual for me, to find our seat on the bus. Thank you.
So let's talk about the youth of Baltimore. We were privileged to have Freeman Rabbowski on the show a couple weeks ago. Freeman is a very old friend, used to be a neighbor, and he's been part of a program called the Meyerhoff Scholarship Program, where they identify young folks, many out of Baltimore City, most of them African-American, but other groups as well now. And they really help them move from their high schools through the college environment and off to grad schools, where they go to PhDs and medical degrees and all of that. Where are the innovative programs that are out there for the young folks of Baltimore? We really need to find a future for folks if we're going to ask them to look past the problems of the city and into their, into how they're going to be as adults.
Listen, that is one thing that Baltimore does not have a shortage of. The problem is, is Scott, is that we haven't really invested in those from top to bottom, right? When you think about Meyer Hoff, when you think about the College Bound Foundation Program that I came through, I think about Wide Angle Media that teaches young people how to, you know, deal, deal with media. There are so many, uh, great programs, B360 and, and, and Park Heights, where, uh, takes young people in Baltimore's affinity with, with dirt bikes and teaches them STEM and how to build. And all of those kinds of, like, there are so many, uh, programs in the city. What we need to do is invest in these programs and allow them to scale up, allow them to have the impact, allow them to be invested in and keep their autonomy. Because what has happened in Baltimore a lot of times is that we have great programs, but unless they, they come with a brand or a tag for somebody that everyone knows, we've chosen to like, say, okay, that's a little cute program, but we're not going to help them grow. If we want Baltimore to be its best though, and to grow into being that, you need to have people that are on the ground, that are leading those issues and allowing them to grow from within, not making it, uh, something that has to be a part of a franchise, so to speak.
And where does the money come from for those programs? Is it by not criminalizing people and putting them in jail? I mean, help me understand where the dollars come from to expand those programs.
Yeah, it diff- it, it comes from all over, right? It's about totally bringing everyone together, philanthropic, the city, you know, we have the Children and Youth Fund that was created for that purpose to grant money to organizations that typically don't get it. It's about reimagining how the city spends its dollars and where that goes is about reimagining totally, like where the business community invests in, when you're talking about their, their, uh, how they give back to the community. We, it's all of it together. We have to, Scott, do something very, very unique. We have a unique opportunity now. COVID, for all that it's wrecking of our lives, also creates opportunity. Because normally when you push, right? And this is something that's going to be great for me. Normally when you try to push change quickly, like re- rethink quickly, folks say, well, it's going to, it's going to completely wreck the whole system. Well, COVID has already done that for us. So now we can do the tough work of breaking down those smoke stacks, those silos and forcing us all to come together, be uncomfortable, have those uncomfortable conversations about how we need to build and support and spread out. We don't all need to be operating in the same neighborhood, serving the same young people. That's the tough conversation that we're going to have to have.
And for people who have either lost their businesses or given up on the city, you're just the right person to say, how do we inspire more people? How do we restore that faith in the city? How do we encourage new businesses? How do we encourage people to move to Baltimore City?
Well, we do it in a couple of ways. First and foremost, we, we show them, right? We don't just tell them, we show them that new vision, we show them their new structure, we show them that new, uh, focus on dealing with and tackling Baltimore's issues. But we also do something that Baltimore has done a horrible job of doing. All of us know how much, uh, how many great things happen in the city every day, but no one knows about them. We also, while simultaneously dealing with our issues, we also need someone to be willing to champion Baltimore City in every place that they go. And I always say, no matter where I go in this country, in the city, in the state, I carry Baltimore on my forehead. You can see it when I open my mouth, you know that I'm from Baltimore and that I'm proud of. And I'm going to talk about all the great things that are going on. I'm going to work on the issues, we're going to build a better city, we're going to start to build systems that want, that make people want to be here. And you do that, like for businesses, we're going to see businesses grow where we intend, where we're not just intentionally going after only the big fish and we're going to, some one company is going to save us. Well, we know, we're going to say, no, we have all these small and medium sized businesses that are here, that have been here, that are dedicated. We're going to figure out how to support them, we're going to get them the services they need. We're going to create an environment for them to be successful and the same thing for families. That's how we're going to do it.
So Baltimore has some great cultural assets. You've got the Maryland Zoo, which is phenomenal for anybody hasn't been there in a while. You've got the aquarium, you have the Meyer Hoff, you have museums. But I want to hit a topic that according to, to, to Mike Huber is one of your favorites, the Baltimore Orioles. So I understand you're a big Orioles fan and, and I grew up with my father on the broadcast team as one of the guys out in the truck. So I used to go to 40, 50 games a year and loved the Orioles. So tell me about the Orioles and, and, and this season and how it interacts with the COVID issues in the city. But more importantly with, how do we make sure that the Orioles stay in Baltimore City for the foreseeable future?
Well, listen, the Orioles are a Baltimore team, right? I am, I, I know that the Orioles are going to be here. And let me just start off by saying this, Scott, there is nothing more in the world of sports that I want. I will take one World Series championship over five Super Bowls from the Ravens. That, that's how bad I want a Orioles World.
So I was there in 66, it's the only advantage of being old.
Yes, well, I'll just bear with me for a minute here. I was born in 84, that's the year after they, they won the World Series. We, you know, I was there in the nineties when we went to the playoffs and that young man from New York snatched the World Series out of our hand. Uh, and then I just remember sitting in the stadium empty by myself, literally until 2012. And we were that close. And I just know, uh, one of these days we're going to get it right. And what we have to do is also, listen, we have to support them. We know that COVID is wrecking that, that way of life too. Uh, it's ironic that the Orioles were until this point, the only team to, to play a game with no fans. And there are still a few players left, left with that. But when you think about, uh, sports and entertainment in Baltimore, and I actually said this, uh, I, I had the opportunity to speak to the Ravens defense on a Zoom call a few weeks ago. Like sports teams in Baltimore, they really take on the persona of the city. They're gritty, they're not fancy, they never give up, they're dedicated, they're going to fight and push. And that's what the Orioles have been, like despite all the things that going on, have been going on, they remain committed to the city. And the city has to be, remain committed to them. So what do I tell folks? Like from a city standpoint, we have to build the infrastructure around them that allows for people to come and enjoy the games, be safe, enjoy their time in the city, but also we have to do something else. We have to go to the games when we can once again, we have to support them. We can't just be one of these places where we wait until they're good. I'm going to sit my butt in there and watch it when we're terrible and because I love Baltimore. And we know that that's how we do it, when we know that the team's going to be great again, uh, as we move forward with our young core and we're going to fill up that stadium again and we're going to keep that going because the Orioles are so much a part of Baltimore that I actually, uh, uh, this is something that is very unique. One of the things that bothers me about us as a city is that our city flag looks almost identical to that of Pittsburgh. It's the same colors, it's black and, black and gold, which makes me think that maybe we should change it to black and orange, but we can have that discussion at a later date.
So, so I'm thrilled you're an Orioles fan. We had, and there is some worry that the team might look elsewhere at some point. Is that something that, that you'll be involved in fairly early, just to make sure that they're not going anywhere?
Yeah, I've, I've been luckily to have a, a relationship, uh, with members of the family for quite some time. And I'm going to be continuously talking to them. They know that as long as I'm here as council president, as I'm mayor, I will do what I have to do to keep them here. I want them here for the long term. And, and they have said, you know, that they, they love Baltimore and they want to be here. And we look forward to supporting, uh, helping them. We know the things like having a concert there at the stadium, all of those great things about how to reimagine, uh, the whole areas that entertainment places also a great thing for us.
That's great, that's great. Okay, so you've promised us a World Series in your four years? Is that a promise?
Uh, I, I can promise many things. I'm going to promise, I'm going to promise everyone that we will be back in the playoffs. That's our promise right there.
Gotcha. Beth, did you have a question or?
I, I just got really excited because I was at the Billy Joel concert at the stadium. Um, and I can't wait till we can have another concert and actually be there in person. Cause it was, it was quite a memorable and special time to be there. So I, I'm just encouraged by your optimism and particularly by, we need to show up. We need to show up, just like you said, for the Orioles in bad times, maybe even more so than waiting for the celebrations. So, um, that, that's, that's my sign off is I, I, I'm signed up. And I hope that our audience realizes that everybody has a part to play and everyone can become involved. And there's so much to do that you can really pick that thing that most resonates with you.
So I do want to point out that we're at the end of July and the Orioles are in first place.
Yeah.
I want to point that out.
That would be my, my parting thing, uh, Scott, that in a short season, anything can happen, so.
Exactly right.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, at the moment, we're in a total pause on the season because of our, because of the Marlins. So we, we will see where that goes.
But if they cancel the season today, Orioles finish in first place. We are not cutting, we, we're not, we're not, uh, uh, being picky about how we get first place.
No, okay, so, so the we're number one T-shirts can be printed now.
Absolutely. So Brandon, I know we have a hard stop in just a minute or so. First, thank you so much for being here. Is there anything else that we didn't talk about that you'd like Baltimore to hear, particularly the Baltimore Jewish community to hear?
Yeah, listen, I just want to read this message. Uh, I intend to be a mayor of all of Baltimore. When I talk about a new way forward for the city, it's a new way forward for all of us together. Uh, making sure that we are forced to deal with all the issues of the past. But most importantly, that we are working together to show and build a better Baltimore for everyone. So it doesn't matter, I always tell folks, it doesn't matter to me if you voted for me or not. I'm going to be your mayor no matter where you live in the city because the only way that Baltimore is truly going to be more is if we do it together.
Brandon, thank you so much. Beth, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I will just add my thanks. I don't, you probably don't recall, but when you spoke at the Associated before the pandemic, you and I were actually seated next to each other and had lunch. So I will look forward to having lunch with you again sometime soon as we, as we work together. Thank you so much to Baltimore City Council President Brandon Scott for being here today. And I'll just go on with my announcements. Our next show will be Tuesday, again, August 4th at noon. Please continue to visit associated.org and jaymoreliving.com for more information, stories and resources, and sign up for our weekly newswa- letter. And please, everyone, stay well.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you, bye bye.